Good evening, this is the May the 24th hearing for the Executive Appointments Committee. I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chairman of the Committee. On my left is Councilman Burnett from the 8th District who is the Vice Chair. On my right is Jennifer Coates, Staffing for this Committee. On her right is Paul Plymouth from President's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cohen from the 1st District.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Schleifer from the 5th District. And Ms. Rebecca Hab from President Young's Office. This evening we will review seventeen nominations for the Youth Commission. We would like to welcome you. When called upon, please state your name and tell us about yourself and why you want to serve. After everyone has finished speaking, we may have a few questions for you. First person I'm gonna call, but I need you to come up to the podium and... Good evening, can you tell a committee about your background, your experience and skills, and why would you like to serve?
My name is Keegan Taylor, I represent District 1. I'm currently attending St. John the Evangelist in Severna Park. At that school, I serve on the Student Council and through that I have organized two middle school dances and service projects throughout the year. I am also in Drama Club and I play Peter Pan in Peter Pan, which definitely shows I'm not afraid to use my voice. I am also currently directing and editing the 8th grade play. That shows that I definitely have to use some compromise with my classmates, but I'm also, at the end of the day, have to make all the calls and sometimes have to be a leader. I also am a straight A student and have received two scholarships to the Institute of Notre Dame where I will be attending next year. I am a Lecturer and Canter at church and I serve dinner every Friday night I can at St. Vincent de Paul Church. I also serve dinners at Sarah's House through school. At St. Vincent de Paul, each time I serve dinner to the homeless, sometimes I'll see people that are coming again and again. This really opens my eyes to how the poverty is in Baltimore, how great a number it is. Some people are coming from work, some people are really smart, but they still don't know when their next meal is going to be, and it's really hard to see that. I am also a US Soccer referee, and that definitely shows that I'm not afraid to speak up. I definitely have to make hard calls and speak up to the coaches, sideline parents, and the players sometimes. I have lived in Baltimore my entire life, and before me my grandparents lived here and my great-grandparents emigrated here, so I have a lot of history in the cities. I want to be a part of the Youth Commission because I want to be a voice for the voiceless. I learned that having a voice is very important when I was just nine years old. I lobbied to ban the possession and distribution of shark fins in the state of Maryland. The law was passed. That showed me that every voice matters, no matter how young you are or anything else. As long as you have a passion for something, that's all you really need. The youth is a very important part of the city because we are the future, and that future needs to be bright. My eyes were truly opened when there was unrest in Baltimore. My classmates were saying horrible things about the city that I love because all they saw was what was presented by the media. Baltimore is an amazing place, we have the National Aquarium, the Science Center, many other theater places and art museums, but people don't always get to see that. I hope to show everyone that Baltimore is an amazing place. One of my passions is public education. I believe that every child should have access to a quality education in their community. A public education is the foundation for a bright future for all of the children of Baltimore. If we want leaders and citizens that are smart people, then we definitely need a good education to build that foundation.
I'd just like to recognize Karan Banks from the Mayor's Office and Keenan Jeter, Advisor to the Youth Commission. Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilman from the 1st District, Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for being here and for applying to serve on the Youth Commission. I was wondering if you could describe your thoughts on what role young people can play in making our city better? And specifically, you spoke in your testimony about poverty and about some of the issues of division that we have in Baltimore, and I'm wondering what role you see yourself and the Youth Commission playing in bringing people together and ameliorating poverty and the other things that are harming our city?
I think that showing that the youth really does care about the city is very important, and I definitely think that we will need to reach out to our communities, and not even just our communities, to reach out to everyone. We also need to reach out to other kids our age, maybe visit some of the schools and talk to them, and to ask them, "Well, what do you want in the city? What do you need?" And ask them to advocate for themselves, or maybe even be their voice, because they don't always have one, and they need to know that what they care about can be heard if they speak up.
Great. Well, I just want to say, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to run to an Education Town Hall, but I am very excited to hopefully get to work with you on the Youth Commission, and I hope you will bring the same energy and enthusiasm that I've seen so far into this building right here.
Thank you.
I need to recognize Councilman Henry from the 4th District and Kevra Conce from President Young's Office. Okay, we're gonna break with procedures so my council colleague from the 1st District can vote on his nominee from the 1st District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to entertain a motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Burnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? All opposed? If the vote is favorable, the Committee will recommend a favorable report for this nominee. Can you tell a committee about your background, experience and skills, and why would you like to serve?
Good evening, my name is Makaya Jeffress, and I am here on behalf of District 2. I currently attend Baltimore City College and I am in the 10th grade. When I first got into the city, I thought it was gonna be really easy, just like middle school. However, that wasn't the case according to my first report card that I received in the 9th grade. I wasn't happy with my grade, and I knew that it had to change. I started going to coach class and doing other activities in school to help my grade improve, and ever since I have been able to maintain a 4.0 and above GPA. Living in Baltimore, I see a lot of violence, hate crime, drama, and et cetera. However, I try to get involved in a lot of activities such as feeding the homeless, teen summits at my friend's church, attending anything that I can do to leave a good impact on both me and my community. I will apply this to the Youth Commission by being persistent, showing leadership, and doing anything that I can to make the community better. Man, it's though that I am a member of the Youth Commission, I expect to see change in the communities of Baltimore. More recreation centers and extracurricular activities such as sports programs, academic programs, anything for the youth so that the youth won't adapt to bad behaviors. I would also like to see more free drives such as food drives, clothing drives, and shoe drives for people in poverty and less fortunate. All in all, I would like to see more outreach programs. I plan to help the Committee move forward by reaching out to people and local businesses to get donations that will allow me to hold these types of events. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you. You can have a seat. Could you just tell us something about you and why you want to serve on the Youth Commission? Could you just tell us something about you and why you want to serve on the Youth Commission?
My name is Theodore Levante Clark, I'm from the 3rd District, and I am a sophomore at Boys Latin. I am sixteen years old, and growing up in the city, I saw a lot of good things come from my community and the city as a whole. District 3 has always modeled... has always modeled something that I want to be a part of. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question one more time?
Tell a committee about your background, experience and skills, and why would you like to serve?
Alright, so, in my neighborhood, I try to volunteer whenever I can. I do trash pickups, I do tree plantings, I volunteer for my Boy Scout troop, I've done cleanups at Herring Run. In Boy Scouts, I am very close to being an Eagle Scout. I was the senior patrol leader for two years, so I led the pack, the troop, for, I think, two years. At my school, I am trying to be a leader of the Diversity Club, and at a day, a few weeks ago, that we talked about identity, I led a small group discussion at my school about identity and what it is to be who you are. And at that day, I gave a speech to my school about a part of my identity, and I talked about Baltimore and how that had changed so much of my life. And that, writing that speech, really, really cemented in my mind that I wanted to change Baltimore as much as Baltimore had changed me. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you. I want to just thank all of you for stepping up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Chandra Davis. Can you tell a committee about your background, experience and skills, and why you want to serve in the Youth Commission?
Okay, so, my name is Chandra Davis. It's okay, people make it all the time. I'm currently gonna be graduating in two weeks from Baltimore Polytechnic Institute, which I'm a senior at. I, pretty much my whole life has been about servitude and serving the citizens of Baltimore. At my most recent church, I was like number two in involving a back-to-school rally in which I helped get the MTA to come out and give out back-to-school supplies for the children that were in need. I also helped put out a flyer and help for the neighboring schools to know about the back-to-school rally. When I was serving at previous churches, just ushering anything that I could do that helps serve, because that's one of the biggest things that I take in as a, I guess, a character trait. I love to serve, and I love to find opportunities to serve, and I think that's definitely what I'm looking forward to in the Youth Commission, the ability to serve, the ability to bring about a change that's effective for Baltimore City.
And are there any questions? Thank you.
Alex Freeman. Alex Freeman, 5th District, Baltimore City, Northwest Baltimore, Councilman Schleifer, best councilman right there. Just gotta mention it.
He must be your brother.
No for me, Mr. Chair.
You tell us something about and why you want to serve on the Youth Commission?
Well, I currently serve on the Board of the Cheswell Neighborhood Association in Northwest Baltimore, I'm their youth liaison, and I found most troubling about, like, most difficult is that people don't even know that the Community Association exists. People don't know what they do, you know, when their meetings are, and I feel like it's similar to the Baltimore City Youth Commission where a lot of people don't know about the Youth Commission. They don't know, they don't know why, how that they're actually, that youth in Baltimore have a voice here in City Hall, and I hope that I could bring my experience from the Cheswell Neighborhood to the Youth Commission. I had the pleasure of serving on Councilman Schleifer's campaign, and it was some of the most enlightening months of my life. I went from, all from Howard Park to Mount Washington, all across the 5th District, and I heard the concerns about school closings and high crime, and, you know, road difficulties and water bills, and I hope that I could bring those concerns that I heard all around the 5th District to the Youth Commission. Last year, I interned at the Mayor's Office, it was some of the best weeks of my life, I loved it, and I worked at the Public Affairs Office, and I really got to see the inner workings of the city. I set up for the press briefings, and I saw the handling of the Mayor's social media accounts, and I hope that I could bring that, that experience I had in the Baltimore City Mayor's Office into the Youth Commission. Regarding this council, I'm one of those seven live viewers on Charm TV that watch these hearings and from these five cameras over here. And, you know, when I watch that, every single other Monday, every other Monday I watch those meetings, I realize, you know, I'm just at my home watching, and, you know, I need to be there, I need to actually take action, I can't just watch, watch what's happening, I need to take action. And I feel that this Youth Commission, I could actually take action and stand up for what I believe in, in City Hall. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to recognize Mr. Terry Hickey from the Mayor's Office also.
6th District, I attend Baltimore City College.
Okay, tell us something about your experience and why you want to serve on the Youth Commission?
Okay, so, I'm a Baltimore City College Junior. I've lived in Roland Park for the majority of my life, I lived on the Eastern Shore for a little bit. I've become an active member of the city community, I'm a teacher's assistant and live in classrooms as well, as a debater at City, and an organizer at Bootle that helps out with middle school events, judging them. I'm on the varsity soccer team, I helped found the Environmental Club at City, I've campaigned in multiple elections, I'm on the Baltimore Office for the promotion of the Arts, Youth, Arts Council, and I've also helped organize fundraising campaigns for the library, and now creating a garden in the second courtyard at City. City and Roland Park have provided very different, yet equally useful experiences that will influence me on the Youth Commission. Growing up in Roland Park was a complete bubble, I had no idea that every neighborhood in Baltimore wasn't as filled with opportunity and, like, a bunch of different programs meant to help youth succeed as Roland Park is. And in middle school, going outside of Roland Park, I saw the less funded areas of Baltimore, and I saw that, like, I was incredibly privileged, and that I am incredibly privileged to be here. And this coming from an area of immense privilege has given me a view of the inequality in Baltimore that influences every opinion and decision that I'll make on the Youth Council. And now, I guess, moving on to what City's done for me, City provided an equal amount of development in myself that I'll bring to the Youth Council, as the community represented students from all over Baltimore, and has many groups that develop my opinions and my actions. City has given me access to multiple groups that discuss the role of government, and grassroots organizations, and politics, and in changing a city from the inside. Debate's been an incredibly rewarding experience for that, not to mention, like, the aptitude for dedication and hard work that the IB program at City has specifically, like, drilled into me every day since freshman year. In terms of what I hope to get from the Youth Council, I hope to get two main things from my experience, a development of my understanding and ability to interact with politics on a local scale, as this is a career path that I spent a lot of time considering, and I also want to have my voice heard in the city to try and help and improve Baltimore. Being a Youth Commissioner will put me into a position that I've never been in before in politics, to give me a better understanding and comprehension of political change through first-person experience. I hope to accomplish a lot as a Youth Commissioner as well, but the biggest issue that I see in Baltimore today is the educational inequity around the city. I want to work to correct the difference in opportunity that students in affluent neighborhoods have in comparison to students in poorer neighborhoods of Baltimore, because that influences literally every single thing that is wrong in different neighborhoods. It all goes back to the education inequity. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Miles McIntyre?
My name is Miles McIntyre, I represent the 7th District. I'm currently enrolled into Northwestern High School where I'm a senior. I'm a senior at Northwestern High School, which will be closing this year. I will be the last graduating class of Northwestern High School. Northwestern has taught me a valuable lesson about how you have to work in order to get a change, and so, what I learned from Northwestern was that change doesn't happen in a day, you have to work hard and put effort towards a change. And the Youth Commission will allow me to perform change in order for a better Baltimore. I volunteer at my church, at the Soup Kitchen, every Thursday and Wednesday, and it taught me how to budget and how to make sure you have enough meals for everyone. My church is located around a project, so, there's a lot of people from the community who comes into my church to eat, who can't eat every day because they don't know where their next meal is coming from. I would like to, I would like to get from the Youth Commission is how to implement programs in order for a better Baltimore. I would like to also, like, I would like to also, like, put programs in place for drug addiction, mental illness, because in the community, a lot of people suffer from mental illnesses and drug addiction, and it's not really known in Baltimore, but drug addiction and drug abuse is the number one killer in Baltimore City over homicides. And I just want, I will be going to Coppin in spring semester, and I want to take public health so I can really show, like, teach the public how the Youth Commission works and, like, give knowledge out to Baltimore City. Thank you.
Congratulations for your scholarship to Coppin. Any questions? Thank you.
Hello, I am Eva Wise. I am a junior at Edmiston Westside High School. In my school... Oh, you didn't ask me a question, I'm sorry.
Well, just tell us about... No, you fine.
We're go-getters in this brigade, man, we go for it.
Well, just tell us about your experience and why you wanted to serve on the Youth Commission.
Okay. At my school, I am the band president, the class of 2018 vice president, the lacrosse captain and goalie. I'm a part of the National Technical Honor Society. I'm in training to be a peer mediator. In my community, I've done multiple community outreaches with faith-based organizations. I've gone into senior homes to help make meals for them and give them food and clothes. I'm a part of the Baltimore City Health Department, and I'm a youth nutrition educator to promote healthy living in food deserts. I will apply this to the Youth Commission by bringing my leadership, communication, and community engagement skills, and try to encourage more city youth that we have a voice, and we can make a change no matter who we are or where we come from. And I represent District 8, if I didn't say that.
Any questions?
I just want to say that she really does walk the walk. I think we first met at the Baltimore City Public Schools rezoning hearing, and she was there advocating for the school for budget cuts, also, a woman of my heart as a lacrosse player as well. I think you're a goalie, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, really is doing, really doing the real work, and just wanted to thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Darryl Hebron. I'm currently attending Thomas Jefferson Medical Arts Academy.
Okay, tell us about your experience and why you want to serve on the Youth Commission?
The reason I want to serve the Youth Commission is because I want to gain strong communication skills, teamwork and leadership. I would like to develop a clean, safe, non-violent, drug-free housing for my community. I would try to help my community to stay clean, make a no-drug-free zone on every block, and update housing for the community and be a supporter. I will be able to apply myself to leadership and teamwork to Youth Commission to bring together corrupted communities that lack leadership and teamwork. In my community, there is a rehab center to better people and to lead them to the right path of success. In my district, there are a lot of abandoned houses, drug dealers, and shooting. This affect my community due to drug use, boarded-up housing, low cost of housing. I would like to make my community a safe place for kids to play and family to come together. I would try to make my community a better place to live by building teamwork and leadership.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Hold on, one second. Sorry, one second, one second.
We're gonna, I'm sorry, we're gonna recess for about two minutes so we can seat the second group of nominees for the Youth Commission, which you'll be next on the next We're ready to reconvene, Ms. Ayers Prince?
Esteemed City Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak with this evening. My name is Ayers E. Prince, representing District 10 from Thomas Johnson Elementary and Middle School, and a member of the Digital Harbor Steering Committee and National Junior Honor Society member. I am lucky enough to attend an excellent Baltimore City Public School with computer labs and 3D printers at our disposal. Fortunate to have Principal Mr. James Dendinger and the teachers who make it a priority to incorporate technology education into our daily school lessons. Luckily to live in a district with the Digital Harbor Foundation, which provides after-school and summer technology education in coding, making, and innovation. As a result of my technology and STEM focus, I have improved my understanding... Oh, thank you. I have improved my understanding of math and science, including my grades. Personally, my example proves how important technology and education is to academic achievement and future career opportunities and the future of Baltimore. Through the Youth Commission, I would like to understand how business, government partner to influence our future city, and government youth are the future. So, I would like for other Baltimore City students to enjoy the same chances I've had. The reason why I'd like to be a part of the Youth Commission is because I believe in... I believe in problem-solving and leadership and connecting to our youth here in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alex Owen. I'm currently a 9th grader at Baltimore School for the Arts, and I represent District 11.
Okay, tell us your experience and why you want to work on the Youth Commission?
I've attended Baltimore City Public Schools since kindergarten, and I've lived in Baltimore my entire life. Growing up in my community in elementary school, there were a lot of diverse people dealing with many different issues. I saw many kids overcome hard times at such a young age, which made me, as a young child, become inspired to always continue to push myself no matter the circumstance. Now, I study dance as my art at my high school, which has required a lot of discipline and perseverance from me. I doubted myself very often but chose to push through as I was very passionate about dance. I intend to bring that same dedication and hard work with me to the Commission. I'm very fortunate that I live in a supportive community... I'm very fortunate that I live in a supportive community where families care for each other and help one another out. I have always felt welcomed in my community and have made great relationships within my community. I know I'm lucky to have that in my life, which is why I want to spread that throughout the whole city. I want to be able to learn more about the issues facing youth all across the city and how we can work towards solutions that will benefit the youth of Baltimore. I would like to give the youth of my community and Baltimore as a whole a voice and an opportunity to contribute their ideas about what needs improvement or change. I want to help my community as well by helping the issues or challenges we face come to light and help my community take action to overcome these challenges. I look forward to being able to gain knowledge as well as contributing my own on the issues facing the youth. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mercedes Thompson. I'm a junior at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute.
Could you tell us your experience and why you want to serve on the youth commission?
At my school, um, I'm class secretary of my, I have the class of twenty eighteen, um, where I have planned um several events for our school as well as done fundraising. Um, I'm also SGA president of this program known as Merit, um, which operates at Hopkins. And I've also worked extensively with the organizations within my community, such as Hopkins, where I conduct research. Um, I'm also vice president of my environment club and I have um helped uh create several field trips to raise awareness about Korean events. Um, in addition, I recently co-founded an organization known as Baltimore Beyond Plastic. Um, and we've been extensively involved in legislation, um even getting a rev- resolution passed here unanimously at City Hall. And we met with several of you here today. Um, I've also been actively involved in lobbying um in Annapolis and we recently held a rally in front of City Hall um in February. And I have been um planning several youth events, such as the Youth Summit, which Councilman Cohen attended and talked debt. Um, I hope to take my leadership ability in relation with legislation and use it on the youth commission and be a re- um, and I will hope to use it as a resource um and sup- support to further impact my community and raise awareness about the issues I see um and gain more community involvement, um resources to help better my community um and impact legislation from the youth perspective. Um, and raise awareness on um issues that are very important to my district and community. Thank you.
Thank you for serving the youth commission in the twelfth district and I look forward to working closely with you and my door is always open whenever you want to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Um, my name is Darius Farah.
Sorry.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I am currently a student at Crystal Ray Jesuit High School on uh Chester Street. Um, my main focus for being a part of the youth commissions is to bring what I like to call an inside scoop. I've been in the mix of a lot of violence and crime in Baltimore City since I've maybe seven, seven years old. Um, I've seen a lot of killings, I've walked outside and seen dead bodies and police officers trying to scoop up the pieces of someone's head, basically. Um, well, first, let me tell you, I'm sorry, I did tell you about myself. Um, in middle school, I was SGA president in eighth grade and seventh grade, I was vice president. Currently, I'm trying to become the sophomore president for Crystal Ray and a peer minister, where I will be able to give, what do they like to say, joy around the school. So I will be helping those who have time, hard times expressing themselves, express Being a youth commissioner, I just want to bring truth, uh change. You can't clean up all the violence at once, but I would like to clean up as much as I can.
Any questions? Thank you. Destiny Davis.
Um, my name is Destiny Davis. I'm fourteen and I attend Baltimore Honor story Public Charter School.
Okay, could you tell us about some of your experience and why you want to serve on the youth commission?
Um, at my school, which provides an environment that supports compassion, self-discipline, lifelong learning, and the awareness of my responsibilities to be the change I can, I want to be. Um, I help younger students and engage with my peers using the philosophy of my school. I have the knowledge to share the ideas and needs gathered by city residents. I also have the self-discipline to see tasks through to the end and the compassion to help others who don't have a voice. I have seen the effects of some of the problems within our city and how it impacts the youth. As children, we are often told to be seen and I heard, so our voices have been lost. Going to shelters and soup kitchens with the organization Jack and Jill and watching the news, it has shown me that we as a city need to do better. We as the youth are the future and I think Baltimore has forgotten that it takes a village. What I expect to get out of the youth commission is it would allow me to make great recommendations for programs and policies that will improve the well-being of the youth and their families.
Any questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Andrea Marino and I'm fourteen years old and I'm in ninth grade at the McDonough School and I'm an at-large.
Could you tell us about some of your experience and why you want to serve on the youth commission?
Like I said, um, I'm currently attending the McDonough School as a freshman. And during my entire middle school career, I was in the Crossroads School, in which I worked many s- community service projects with the Living Classroom Foundation, working with kids in the Bear School, the Ark School, do food drives around Thanksgiving for our neighbors, and since then, that has become my passion. Being in the youth commission lets me work with others, share my opinion, apply my leadership and compassion for the better for a city. I love my city and I know that anything is possible if we work together. I was recently in the grand opening of the UA House at Fayette, founded by the Under Armour and the Living Classroom Foundation. A great opportunity for young kids to work after school and spend their free time in academic activities. And activities like this make the adults get closer to the youth, get them in the right path. Because whatever we make of ourselves now will be our future, Baltimore, ten years from now. So I'm here to represent the young lives, to speak up. I s- I expect to meet new people, hear new opinions, work together, because no matter how young you are, we can always help the kid next to us at the bus, at school, at a park. So I believe our mission is here to advocate for services and programs for children and youth. Leading our city to be an equitable society. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Isaac Wilson.
My name is Isaac. My name is Isaac Wilson. Uh, I'm an, I am an at-large commissioner. I go to the historical Frederick Douglass. At my school, there's a lot of people who like tend to have the tendency to look up to me. They're always like, okay, you're the next guy, you're, you're gonna overcome all these trials and tribulations. They, they look at me and they come to me for help. But I feel like the same thing that I see, that they see in me, I see in them, if not more. I'm the type of person like that always sees the good in everything. Like even, even, I just see the good in everything. I'm a student leader with the intersection program. Um, recently, I just delivered a speech at the US District Courthouse concerning the consent I was uh in front of the Department of Justice and the uh the judge, the police department. And that experience propelled my voice and it taught me the power that I have as a youth and I have as a person. Um, I've done a couple of events with uh Dumont Baltimore because I'm also a poet. Um, I actually performed at the Youth Poet Laureate Competition, which was uh right across the hall. Um, I want to bring my creativity as an artist to the youth commission to think of new op- to come up with new op- new ideas on making the city better. I'm also a part of the uh Youth Leadership Council. Right now, I'm working on a uh project with a group, I can't remember the name of, but uh we're, it's gonna, we're working on an initiative to uh make, to address risks to adolescent health.
Okay. Any questions?
I was.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm also a part of the rant program at my school, which is a recording and media arts pro- um, recording and media production uh program. Recently, I was the head, I was the head student director for a music video we did for a local artist by the name of uh First Lady Shondi. And an alumni came in and we had this teach and learn experience. I would like to bring that same teach, learn, learn and teach environment to the youth commission.
Any questions? Thank you.
Last one, guys, get excited. Um, hi, I'm Claudia Henry and I'm hoping to represent the entirety of Baltimore as a member of the at-large on the youth commission.
Could you tell us some of your experience and why you want to serve on the youth commission?
Uh, well, I've always had a very diverse experience in relation to schooling. I am currently a ninth grader at the Park School of Baltimore. And I was previously, and I previously attended Tunbridge Public Charter School and Roland Park Elementary Middle School. So I've always known, so I've always seen, so I've always, so whenever I go to different schools, I see that there are different people at every school, because I've gone to a public school, a charter school, and a private school. And there are different people at every school, so I get to see the diverse culture at every school. And this has helped me meet a large amount of different youth who have shaped my experiences and helped me see through different perspectives. This has often helped me see multiple sides of an argument, leading me to be a great compromiser. While I count myself as knowing Baltimore quite well, I'm always looking for new ways to see different parts of Baltimore and to learn even more about it, pushing my boundaries and to know even more about Baltimore than the small slice that I've tried to explore on my own. That is why, um, that is why I think that the youth all throughout Baltimore should try to reach out to each other and to learn about their city of Baltimore so that the entire city can finally understand itself.
Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Jeter vows me to the youth commission, would like to speak before we vote.
Uh, so thank you, uh Councilman Stokes and all the other committee members of the executive appointment uh committee. Uh, thank you for holding this hearing and giving these seventeen young people the opportunity to share their stories of why uh they want to share, uh want to be on um the Baltimore City Youth Commission. Again, thank you to your staff, thank you to Councilman President Young's staff, thank you to the mayor's office, uh thank you to uh the Director of Human Services, uh Terry Hickey. Um, and again, congratulations to all of you all. Thank you.
So I just wanted to also uh thank, thank you, uh Keenan, for your hard work. I know you put a tremendous amount of work in preparing the young people for this hearing. Uh, I know they, they still look a little nervous, uh but you know, round of applause for you. Thank you, sir. Um, also wanted to just congratulate these young people. I'm, I'm listening and look, reading your resumes and it's, it's really inspiring uh to see the hard work that you all are doing. Uh, it makes me wish I could go back to high school and be a little bit more, do a little bit more than uh sports. Um, but it's great that, that there, this young people in our city that do think beyond just the day-to-day work, uh the work, you know, in your schoolwork and going home, but really trying to be a part of the fabric of the community. So uh stepping is a big deal. I know it's uh, I know you're a little nervous coming up here, but it's a big deal to be a part of this. And uh for the, the parents and guardians in the back, congratulations, uh it's really awesome, I know you're proud. Uh, and like, I'm looking forward to working with all of you. So again, thank you for stepping up for, for our city, we really do need you. So it's a big deal. Thank you.
I would like to thank you on behalf of the city council and the mayor's office, but you know, we read the news and we always hear about all the negative things that our young people are doing. But I want to congratulate all, each and one, each one of you for stepping up and taking a leadership role, but doing some positive things in the city. And this is the time that the media should be here, recording this, instead of recording some of the bad things that some of our young people had no reason why it happened to them. So I want to personally thank you for stepping up and look forward to see great things from all of you, from the fourteenth district and the other two at-large. Thank you. Okay, it's time for us to vote. I would like to make a motion for, I would like to entertain a motion for Makaya Jeffress.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Okay, I se- seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor? All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. Okay, alright. The voters favor the committee, we recommend a favor report for this nominee. The next nominee is Labonte Clark. I would like to make a motion for, I would like to entertain a motion for Labonte Clark.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I'd like to enter, the voters favor the committee, we recommend a favor report for the nominee. Next nominee is, I would like to entertain a motion for Sandra Davis.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor? All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. The voters favor the committee, we recommend, recommend a favor report for this committee. Next nominee is Alexander, well, I'm sorry. I would like to entertain a motion for Alexander Freeman, is.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Seconded by a councilman from the fifth district. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark and Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Atticus Cameron.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Miles McIntyre.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I'd like to entertain a motion for Eva Wise.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Darryl Hebron.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Ayers Prince.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Alexander Owen.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I'd like to entertain a motion for Mercedes Thompson.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Darryl Farah.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Darryl Destiny Davis.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Andrea Marino.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Isaac Wilson.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
There's a second, seconded by Councilman Stokes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. I would like to entertain a motion for Claudia Henry.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Seconded by a councilman from the fifth district. All in. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clark Cohen, absent. All the nominees will be placed on the second reading on Monday, March, June the fifth, for the four council to vote on. If there's no other business, the committee is adjourned. Congratulations.